Call meeting to order. Six oh two P M. Wednesday, December first, twenty twenty one. S M H S Gymnasium. Start with a roll call from Carrie here on the far left corner.
Carrie here.
Carrie.
We give you a sister in school, son of a high school.
Andy Mitchell School Board.
Andy Mitchell School Board.
Scott Maxwell School Board.
Jesse Tyler School Board.
Russell Superintendent.
Kelly Russell Superintendent.
Are you good? Sound okay? Feeling good about audio? How's the audio? Can you hear us? Okay. Thank you. I didn't mean to point. Uh, prideful pledge of allegiance. Please.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation and our own individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, been a lot of meetings. I'm gonna look for a motion to approve the minutes of the November third, twenty twenty one school board meeting, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the November third school board meeting.
All right. That was a fact. Discussion, corrections, commentary from the board? All right. All in favor of approving the November third school board meeting minutes as noted, please say aye. Aye. We'll body language for folks at home. A lot of people watch these. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the school board budget review session, November third, twenty twenty one.
I'd like a motion to approve the school board budget review session, November third, twenty one.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion, review, commentary? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the school board budget meeting review session, November third, please say aye. Notes? Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the school A B C meeting, November ninth, twenty twenty one.
To approve the A B C meeting.
I'll second.
Second by Ed. Questions, commentary? All in favor of approving the minutes for A B C, November ninth, please say aye.
Aye.
None of us, thank you. Round in the corner to four out of five, looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the A B C meeting on November sixteenth, twenty twenty one.
To approve the school A B C meeting, November sixteenth.
You guys can always jump in on seconds. You're always too polite. Whenever I do a motion, you can just jump in and second it. I have to ask if it's quiet. Forever going forward on motion, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Never stole a teammate for being too polite. Questions, commentary, correction, all in favor, please say aye. Minutes of the non-public meeting, November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, please make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting, November sixteenth, twenty twenty one minutes.
I'll second that.
Yep. Sweet. Uh, corrections, commentary, all in favor of approving the non-public meeting minutes from November sixteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Jesse, we just got a new set of minutes. That's, I felt like the new was first, so this was a C I P meeting that happened Monday.
So we can add these to the list. Okay. Adding one more, thank you for the addition. I think there's an echo somewhere, so I'll try to use my commentator voice. Uh, looking for a motion to approve the C I P meeting minutes from Monday, November twenty ninth.
I'll make a motion to approve the C I P meeting minutes from November twenty ninth.
I'll second it.
Any comment, correction? Okay. Thank you. All in favor of approving the C I P minutes as noted?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I have the extra now. I don't have, I don't have additions, uh, for agenda. I think we can talk about, um, COVID and masks during your updates, so we already have that as an item, just under your bucket. Anything you want to add?
Uh, that was it.
Okay. Anything from the board? Okay. Um, where's Mike? Mike, from E E I, you have the floor.
Uh, should I come up here?
Sure.
So I, uh, so I didn't even know this was going to be the floor. Is there any chance that it could happen for, if not, for?
Wait, is that on your, is that your account there?
Right.
Is it from Matt Smith, Mike? Yes, yes. So just as a quick, uh, quick update, as a quick update, we've been working on, um, moving toward considering reissuing last year's, um, bond vote and considering, uh, the necessary addition to the elementary school, upgrade of the ventilation system, and, um, uh, many safety improvements. And I think there's, there's, um, a lot of support for, for relooking at that, seeing if we can, um, uh, make the case more compelling this time to the voters. Uh, the flip side is, one of the things we've talked about in the facilities committee is, should we consider, if, if that weren't to pass, having a plan B to at least ventilate the school, um, replace the, the more than thirty-year-old boilers, and also use the one-time federal grant money and, um, wood chip, um, grant that we were awarded, um, last year or this year in twenty twenty. And so, uh, we've been working toward a project that, for your consideration, that would be in the, in the five million dollar range, that would include replacing the boilers, putting in the ducted ventilation system, uh, replacing the aging modular, modular units that are, um, really at end of life and really shouldn't be used for many more years. When we, when we put that, if, if you were to consider a project like that, all new duck work would come through the school, so at that point, at that time, we'd replace the ceiling, the ceiling tiles, uh, the sprinkler heads, um, and, and put in L E D lights. So, um, this, this is what you have before, no, we had it for once, we almost had it. So something like, something like this, um, with the, oh, in and out.
Go ahead and get the color.
Okay, sorry. So again, it was, the, we're in about the, the five point four million dollar range, then there'd be grants and rebates that would take it, um, under five million dollars, um, with everything, including some cosmetic improvements to the school, are, are one option that we considered. There's probably multiple ways to look at it. That could be funded with a, um, tw- up to twenty-year municipal lease, um, and many districts do projects that way. You'll have to take my word for it that, um, the, the project after the grants and rebates was about four point eight million, um, with, with, uh, again, the modular classroom, sprinkler, plumbing, mechanical ventilation, ceilings, uh, biomass boiler, and keeps going in. So, um, this is again, a bit of an order of magnitude, um, and just to get your consideration for if a project like this is worthy of consideration, uh, and then if we, if we were to do so, would it make sense to do a, a seven-year lease, a ten-year lease, or, um, a fifteen or twenty-year lease? So we got, uh, we got the business office proposals in the five million dollar range so that we can assess what the budget impact would be, whether we financed it anywhere from seven to twenty years. Um, any kind of quick questions or feedbacks about considering an option like this?
Mike, did you get, did you get the, uh, raise for that, or are they still on?
Yeah, uh, lease.
Lease agreement?
Yeah.
So, uh, for the seven was a five, one point five seven, um, for the ten, I guarantee that question, the ten year was, for one point seven, and for the fifteen, it was a two point two.
And I've seen twenty years tend to go around two point nine right now, so it just, obviously you save a lot of interest with the short term.
Fifteen was a two point zero, two point zero seven.
So we might as well continue off of those C I P, okay, I think that's, you know, just take a moment and just difference between a bond and a lease agreement, I can pick a run out of.
Yep, yep. So big, um, couple things, te- bonds tend to be a touch less in interest, so tend to pay a little bit less, although those are very, very good rates that we got this year. Um, bonds are considered, um, are, are a debt that, um, cannot be paid off early. So you, you have, uh, if you do a fifteen-year bond, you have to, you have to keep it off for, you have to pay it off for fifteen years. Leases are a little bit more flexible, they can be paid off early. Um, they are, um, they have a different threshold, so typically, uh, for most New Hampshire school districts, a bond, because of all of the legal ramifications of something that can't be paid off early, um, and is considered the full faith and credit of the school district, it takes a sixty percent voter threshold to approve it, whereas leases, um, are fifty plus one. So a lot of districts have done lease projects in this, in this dollar amount range. It typically isn't done for something like an addition, but where this project is focused on ventilation, boilers, it's kind of a spot where, um, where a lease may be considered.
Just to give a context, basically, newly engaged in this long conversation, the only things on this list, please confirm my understanding, the only items being priced are critical life safety issues identified in state inspections and other priority.
I, I would say the, um, there, not every life safety issue isn't fully addressed, but what is fully addressed is, um, removing, is replacing the building that has no ventilation, which is one of the, sorry, let me restart that sentence, is adding ventilation to the building that has not had ventilation. Most of the districts that I've mentioned before were replacing older systems, you guys don't even have a system, so, um, so it's adding ventilation to a building that's never had it. It's replacing the end-of-life boilers, and then doing the cosmetic improvements that go with running duck work through a new building. So we're gonna be through an existing building, so new ceilings, sprinklers, the associated floors in the rooms that we're touching is part of the project, um, but it's, the reason that that was the focus is because lack of ventilation has been one of the, the screaming concerns in the building, and there's one-time grant money, uh, that can be used toward that. So that's, that's the biggest focus. I will say, in fairness, not every safety issue is fully addressed in this version of the project, so in this version of it, we are still gonna have a modular, so you're still gonna have students crossing a main street, and we, we are not addressing the stairwell. The reason, in the, the reason behind that, why aren't we doing the stairwell, because it's, it's not a huge amount to add in it, what the board is focused on here, or this, the committee of the board, we were saying, what is money that would not be lost should in the future, we want to do that addition? So, for example, if this project passes, and this is done, and then in a few years you do the addition, that stairwell reconfiguration would be lost, so that's why that part of it isn't in here at this time.
Yeah, I appreciate it, and I didn't mean the, the long list from the state.
Okay.
Was gonna be fully covered, this is just getting some of that. I just wanted to affirm for people that are new to this conversation, that this is based on taking care of as many life safety issues as possible. And just one last thing, and I'll be quiet. It was my understanding from you last year, and I want you to confirm or correct, that ours is the last never-ventilated elementary school in the state of New Hampshire.
That I'm aware of.
That you're aware of.
Yeah.
So just for context, and then to, to restate what you were saying, when you're talking about these other districts that are doing these leases and these projects, they're replacing systems.
Yes.
That they had done before, where Sonopie has missed two rounds of those.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I think Mike said it probably already, so what Carrie and I really tried to focus on was, how could we ventilate the school, replace the heating system, do the electrical upgrades, and, and not waste any money of the taxpayers three, four years down the road, next year wanted to do the addition? So that's the list that Mike helped us compile, and this is really, it's really the most efficient way to do this. The, the big things that we don't get, which concern me, are the traffic control, we're, we're not doing anything about that, we still have kids that are gonna be playing out in the parking lot, and cars going in and out, and buses going in and out. That's a big concern, and that, we can't do anything about that because we still have to have those modulars, and when we do those modulars, we can't do the parking lot. So, that, that's a major concern of mine. I mean, the space, space, and the stairwell is also on hand, the safety entrance. So I mean, this is really a bare bones, like, this is kind of showing people that, you know, we need to do this to continue on and have some sort of safety upgrades with, with COVID and other, other issues. Uh, you know, the benefit, we talked about, you know, we have to, we don't have to, obviously, we would really like to replace the modulars because they're really in bad shape, and kids shouldn't probably be in the main one. But if we do buy the modulars, we will get some of that money back to sell them back to the company in two years, three years, you know, so it's not a, a total waste, you know, so we will recoup some of that money, but really, we felt that the modulars had to be in this, in this scenario.
And to, to your point, if, if the modulars, maybe the modulars aren't gonna be with us the whole time, we could do, let's say, a, a longer-term lease for the entire project, but a shorter-term lease for the modulars, so that way, um, you know, that, that they could take it back and not, and not recoup it.
Yeah, I, I haven't been involved, uh, more actively since Carrie, um, joined the subcommittee and gone through three, three or four rounds of this over the years, I think this is very thoughtful, very thoughtful minimal, definitely misses the fact that kids cross the road and play in a parking lot, and the modulars should just be torn down and put in the dumpster. So it at least addresses that part instead of the, you know, the parking lot and the other things around, though. I think very thoughtful and considerate of it.
The other thing this does, this uses all of our, all of our grant money, and yes, for money towards the progress, so we're not losing any of that money, and we know we need, we're at the end of life, the boilers at the elementary school end is a sharp, this carries both of those.
I don't think I can add to a lot more, I mean, I think, you know, being responsible with, you know, A, not losing the funding that we have, B, not putting money into something that we would lose later, is, you know, we wanted to just be as responsible as we could, address what we felt were the priority items, and still be able to check those two boxes. Um, so it's kind of like, in our view, it's like a step one of the bigger project that we can take on now without risk of losing. Yeah. And do a step two down the road. Yeah. If we have to. I mean, it's, it's, it's definitely not the, the, you know, ideal that we would like to see happen, we'd like to be able to do this all, address all the needs and just be done, but as an alternative, this is the, this is the way that we need to go.
Yeah, I totally support it, I think it's very thoughtful, carefully planned out. Ed, Scott, your thoughts on, we're gonna see two tonight, this is the first one.
So you wouldn't replace the modular, there's still gonna be a modular that is just gonna, how, how old is the third modular that happened?
I, I don't recall the.
We bought it in the two, early two thousands, if you remember, back in ninety six or ninety eight, when we bought it, and it was been with us since the two thousands, early two thousand.
That's definitely kind of like the boilers out of life and that's something.
Well, if no one's been in there because of COVID, you can certainly talk to the S A U and get a tour, but we had a school board meeting in there two years ago, and, uh, some of the public complained on video that, I didn't have this in the library, this is awful. Didn't see the, the hard irony in that. So they're really bad, so if you don't want to take a, an expert's or a state report, you, you're certainly welcome to drive up and do a loop in the parking lot when the kids are not in school, because they're playing in the parking lot, um, and check it out yourself, but you can get a tour from the superintendent or grounds, because it's, it's bad, it's, there's no way to paint, uh, pretty face on those modulars, it's terrible. So it's a great opportunity. And the lease, when we're done with them, they go back, they don't live there for twenty years, whatever these have. Fantastic. So I guess you're gonna have to do some, uh, an interpretive dance with the, the next things until the slides work, um, going on to the next project.
So I don't think we're doing, I don't think we're.
Oh, I thought you were doing the other one, okay. I misunderstood.
I thought you wanted to do a dance, though.
No, no.
I thought you were gonna do the second one.
And Carrie and Andy said it really well, for five million dollars, four point eight million dollars, you're getting about a third from what's being proposed for a little over, about ten, eight or eleven million dollars, and you use the bond money and stuff, um, in there. And as I spoke with the faculty at the elementary school and high school today, I was very clear, something continued, we need to continue to look at getting improvements in this building, and some teachers at that building said, hey, is there gonna be something that we're gonna be able to do, because we've been waiting, rightly so, to try to get it done, but as it's waiting, it's getting worse. We're gonna go potentially spend four million dollars, five million dollars, but I was very clear to them, you're not gonna see it. You may feel it in the air, you may be able to not have a Dixie chain of plugs download down your wall, but you're not gonna see it. So there'll be nothing visual really as a teacher, and, again, they were a little upset because they, again, worried about the parking lot, they were worried about the stairwell, they were worried about the front entrance, um, adding some additional space and getting out of the nooks and crannies. But I just think it's important to, to recognize that, you know, five million dollars is getting us a third of a eleven million dollar budget, the original budget proposed. It'll be interesting how we, uh, working with the bond attorney, were those warrant articles if we decide to go with two, um, and how they appear on the warrant, on the ballot, and then how those warrants are drafted.
Yeah. Yeah, the full plan, the very similar one from last year, I think, that, that, in contrast to this getting us partway for sort of a lopsided low value versus the full plan, whether he's presenting on it or not, I think giving some color, in contrast, from this kind of step, thoughtful, bare minimum, go back to the, the larger plan, and just to refresh the public on why you're, want to bring that back, the rest of us are supportive of that.
So what that does, it gives us some, some much needed space, it revitalizes the cafeteria, that changes the whole floor plan around the school, so the cafeteria is actually not getting the food past through a window, it actually has a real loading dock, um, it's on ground floor, not in basement, um, you know, it, it changes the whole atmosphere of the parking lot, so that was a one-way parking lot, and it puts the kids in the playground off to the end where the teachers park now, which is a safe zone, no, no car is gonna be able to get over there. It puts a secure, um, like lockout front entrance, so that you can actually, when people come to visit, they come into a secure room, they're being able to be buzzed in, you can see that now, right now, for anybody that's been to the elementary school, you actually have to talk through a, a P A system, and they buzz you through that way after they look at you with a camera, and there's no safe area. So if you didn't want to cause some sort of harm, you basically have free reign in the whole school, you, you get into school. So.
Also keeps all the kids in mind to link to, right, but that's a big one, so there's a lot of disruption in the day, with the kids marching downhill, look back, so it gains back some education on top of their day, and less disruption out there.
If they don't go back, it's a curve. There'll be a multi-purpose from there, so the younger kids won't be having to suck down. So it's not large enough, unfortunately, to be able to do some of the older kids event, but as kids get older, it's a little easier to manage that bill than it is with the county government.
Yeah.
I think, uh, just to add to that, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, when Mike presented, the project is a thirty to fifty-year fix, you heard Carrie and Andy speak very clearly, you go with the five million dollar, four point eight, there's still protect, there's other projects that need to go with that, to get to that full, fully completed upgraded facility that we have been proposed and that is needed.
Yeah, this, this isn't a fifty-year fix.
No, this is, this is kind of a step.
This is giving us ventilation, um, you know, and electrical upgrade, basically.
It's a thirty years ago fix this year.
Yeah, I mean, this would have been two generations ago, rather.
Yeah, yeah. Appreciate.
Four and upwards.
Yeah. I, I appreciate all the work, and Mike, your work and guidance to figure out this, um, this alternative. And for anybody in the public, there's more to come on this, uh, this is a step in the process, there'll be more information, um, more drawings, pricing, all of that is coming, it's, um, next month, actually, so that will be much, this is a natural cycle of how this goes through, and board input, the, the C I Ps work, so you will have a lot in your hands, uh, next month, to respond to and ask questions about.
It's gonna be a public forum.
Yeah, and there'll be a public forum, uh, all of that will come, so we will, we'll go into the holidays, um, with, so this, to back up a little bit, to flesh this out, after tonight, the, the next meetings start in January, there isn't another, uh, board meeting this month, they start in January, the bond, all of that, public forum, more, more information, more drawings, more pricing, all of that will, will, will be reviewed after the holidays, that's how this cycle works. Anything you want to add to that? Just so people know what's coming.
January twelfth.
Yep. Um, we good? Thank you, Mike. Carrie, you have the floor.
We may wanna do, you guys might wanna do updates.
Yeah, let's do updates. I, you have the floor, when you signal that you're ready, is what I was, should have said to you. Elementary school update, um, do you have it, Andy? I can read it off of Walter's email if people want. To keep tradition, give me a second. You want to do yours, Mr. Monian?
We start with Cam, would that be?
Sure, Cam, sorry about that.
So, as all students that have been made aware of, there was a big, big COVID outbreak in the school, right before the pandemic, so students were worried as to whether we would be able to go home to our families because of the outbreak. The school thankfully issued a mask mandate, which is comforting to a lot of students, and it allows the left to go on almost as normal. Um, most of the students developed a fear about the mask, it was an extra layer protection that we were able to put between ourselves and COVID, and it was just a good opportunity to be able to develop, to be able to hang out with our families and vacation.
So, with that said, there was, there's definitely a part of the student body that understand, we all understand the importance of masks, but there's a part that is a little upset because they were under the impression that with a vaccine, we would not be needing masks, but they understand the importance, everyone's complying with it, cooperating, and I don't want to butt in on anyone else that's gonna talk about it, but hopefully there's a reevaluation coming soon, and the students are feeling comfortable now that we're able to deal with our families.
Thank you very much. So for context, the Sonopie Board chooses to have a student representative, I reached out to Cam, I kind of let him know what to expect for the meeting coming up, and I asked him to continue being the voice of all the students, and that can include the good, the bad, the ugly, and the perplexing, and so I'm very thankful for your, but I just want to give context to the community, and I really appreciate it because you're serving well in your roles, thanks for that. Mr. Monian, would you like to go?
Yeah, uh, this kind of came a little bit to, we'll, we'll be very busy, so last time we met, we, uh, we just had the N A S C, uh, report done, then we had students go to, you know, many students went to close-up, many went to Gettysburg, many did day-long activities, um, and then we came back hoping for normalcy, and that's when we had our COVID outbreak. And then we came back hoping for normalcy, and that's when we had our COVID outbreak. So we had that piece, which I guess we're gonna have it in the part of the year right before Thanksgiving, might have worked. Because we're now back and things are starting to feel more normal again. So it's, we've had three very busy, different weeks. So I think a lot of kids were, were good to come back from the Thanksgiving break and feel some normalcy to everything. You know, we we postponed the play, and so the play will be happening next week, but we are going to be doing that. We've got athletics, you know, starting up, the practices are doing that. And we're looking forward to our winter workshop days with the students the day before the holidays. So again, knock on wood, a few busy weeks, a little out of the ordinary, but things are starting to feel, this week, things felt normal in a good way. So hopefully we can continue on that train.
Thank you.
We decided to make the TV for supporting Mount to Gold Dinner yet again this year. That was a great fundraiser done by our service club. Mrs. Watkins and Mrs. Parsons put on that raised money through local food pantry. We did a number of Thanksgiving meals that students donated food for and delivered for the holiday. We also had a great activity where we had a guest speaker come who actually has avian api heritage and spoke with our eighth graders. And they're sponsored by the Center for the Arts, and we really appreciate that. They brought him in. He's done work, you know, in Hollywood advising on movie sets about avian api language. She is is very committed to preserving Native American culture and recognizing the contributions of indigenous people. Spoke really wonderfully with our students and shared his talents and stories, and our kids were a great audience. So we've had some really neat opportunities for our kids over the last month and appreciate the community support of Mount to Gold.
Jesse, you want me to read it like? November was busy celebrating our veterans and preparing for Thanksgiving. The principal's advisory committee is working on revisiting our school's vision and possibly revising it as we enter a new phase of our school. The teachers have been busy with parent-teacher conferences as well as preparing report cards, which go home this Friday. We worked with the SMHS to collect food for the food baskets. The staff continues to participate in professional development in the form of book groups. Teachers in K through three are looking at literacy practices. Teachers in grades through four or five are looking at standard-based report cards. And the UA teachers are looking at incorporating more SEL into their classes. For December, we look ahead to a month full of fun activities, which we are calling a December to Remember. Although we are needing to do a virtual holiday concert, we are looking forward to bringing back Jingle Bells Blitz before we leave for the holidays. Life in elementary school in December can do nothing but put a smile on your face. Thank you for your support and have a wonderful holiday season and see you in the new year.
Thank you. Mr. Holden, superintendent update.
Sure, some of the, just easier things to get through, lots and lots going on. CIP committee, you can see the work that's being done there. Just came out of a budget discussion, EPC budget session. Wrapping up that process, starting to draft the report. Negotiations, the committee might talk a little bit about that, but we have at least come to an agreement. Those negotiations will be ratified by the teachers who are in that process. Just got the draft over to them today. They're gonna review that, talk to the association, and you'll get that draft in January at your meeting. So some things really getting done, getting accomplished. We have our second meeting with the town, the school, the town. Jesse and I met with Shannon Van New, town administrator, and Josh.
Try.
Trial right before Thanksgiving.
Yep.
Right. Went really well. We were able to talk about our budgets and what those budgets potentially look like. We're in the process of developing warrant articles. And over the last, the week before vacation, and then this week, we have Homeland Security come in and do, every three years, they come in and they do an onsite. They did those onsites and we'll be reading those reports. And so one of the things that I was asked and tasked to look at by the board was COVID, sort of my COVID protocols from our opening, from our opening plan. And met with the administrative team before we went out on Thanksgiving break. We had some good conversation. I'm not sure anyone at that time had anything, well, no one at that time had anything very specific to say, no, we need to do this, we need to do that. As we had the high school hit, we went into our masks following our matrix, implemented masks. Working with the school board right before Thanksgiving break, felt it was in our best interest to continue those masks. While people were out on break, knowing that we still had some cases popping, continued those masks into the air this week. And so as I sat last week and I started thinking about what we potentially should look at, or what might we want to change? Or what might we need to do differently regarding our open plan? One of the first things that came to me was, and I spoke again to the teachers about this today. I think we've, we've gotten a little lackadaisical in following our own protocols, quite honestly. I I reminded the teachers today and I put myself in the week. Last September, we walked into school, we had yardsticks, literally yardsticks between kids as they walked down the hallway. Saying, you gotta stay six feet, you gotta stay six feet, put your hand, wash your hands, put your, you know, put your mask up, you know, stay spread apart, stay spread apart. And I think that that helped us get through the year. We certainly had cases last year. We certainly had a couple of outbreaks, but we got through here. I think people were exhausted this year. We came back, we had protocols in place. But our students in their desks, they sit as we do, three feet apart for the most part. But I wonder if, when waiting in line for lunch, are we always staying three feet apart? When we're going to a reading, a small reading group or a reading circle, we staying three feet apart? When we're walking down, going to the gym in the elementary school, going to music class, are we staying three feet apart? Are we reminding kids to wash their hands frequently? I know I've reminded a lot of people, if you're feeling sick, to stay home, but we need to continue to remind people when they're sick to stay home. To complete the daily, the home screening tools. It's one of the biggest pieces to help us potentially slow the spread within our school. We continue to do our cleaning while we're on our buses. Are we being diligent on our buses? We have a transportation, public transportation, if you step onto a bus, you need to wear a mask. That's not a sunnety, that's not an, that's a federal requirement. Are we ensuring that when our athletes and our kids coming on our buses or going on field trips, that our kids are wearing masks? So one of the things I think, and I reiterated with our faculty today, is we need to make sure that we're holding on to our protocols and doing those protocols daily. Reminding our kids about our protocols and adhering to them. Some of my suggestions that I have there, and I can read them to you. You know, one of the things I think we could look at, very similar to what we just did coming off of Thanksgiving. We could potentially look at coming off any long weekend or a school vacation, implement a five-day mask requirement for whole districts. So we get a better understanding when kids are coming back, potentially they have traveled, then with other relatives. Try to negate some of that spread and try to negate people from coming back potentially sick or asymptomatic and passing in on our bill. Travel, as we get to the holiday, the Christmas holiday, folks are gonna travel. They can probably did a little bit of traveling over Thanksgiving. People have a tendency to do a lot more traveling and going out of state or even out of country. It would be on an honor system, but we would say, hey, if you've traveled out of state or out of the country, we would, we would ask that you wear a mask for ten days upon return and continue to self-monitor. If you think that was, that was in place last year, that was something the state said you should have in place. Another piece there, we could look at our percentage. So right now, we look at ten percent. If we hit over a ten percent in a, in a school, we go into a mandated mask. We can do that as well by grade level. I broke down what those percentages are. So a hundred and eighty kids roughly at the elementary school, ten percent is eighteen kids, right? When you hit that in the fifth grade. At the middle high schools, two hundred and seventeen overall. So was the, the ten percent would have been twenty-one kids. If you break it down by middle and high school, it's, it's the eighty-four, thirty-three, so eight or thirteen. The middle high school is a little different because there's a lot of cross-pollination. So we typically have just used that twenty, twenty-one number when we, when we implemented the mask. We could look to reduce that percentage, potentially go to over five percent. One of the other pieces on the back page there talks about extracurricular activities. And I, I'm hearing this a lot from other folks in other school districts. Again, our kids in our, in our classrooms are sitting three feet apart. A lot of the spread is coming from when they're in other social settings, whether it's clubs, it's activities, it's youth sports. It's out at home on the weekends with friends, where perhaps they're not thinking about the potential spread of COVID. And they're potentially not wearing masks, they're thinking about three feet. We want to make sure that all our clubs and activities will strive for that, to maintain that three feet of social distancing, or if they can't, use masks. So you're going to a bee club and we're sitting, we're at the beehives, we're outside, and we're all hunched together working on one hive, we should think about wearing masks. If we're able to safely, if you're parked and we're outside, maybe we don't need to look at masks. Right now, we, the, any type of A regulation, there is not a regulation that students while participating, wear masks. One of the things we did last year, if you're sitting on the bench, last year you were six feet apart, you wore a mask. Potentially, maybe we need to look at, hey, our students that are participating, that are actively involved in the activity, are wearing masks. And I think the last thing I would think that we may want to consider and look at would be anyone containing a large group assembly or a gathering should wear masks for homeschool facilities. So Ed Red Walters' report, we knew if we had an in-person Christmas concert this year, we were gonna put seven hundred, eight hundred people in that, in that gymnasium. And we, we said, all right, can we spread them apart? We were through some logistics. But that's a, that's a potential opportunity for COVID to be spread and then again, brought to our school. So maybe we need to look at, if you're going to a basketball game, unless you can stay three feet apart or you're from the same family. If you choose to sit in a group of people, like our student section, have them put masks on and sit together as a student section, but wear a mask. And I think the same thing, we need to look at that. I know we have a play that was postponed, but we're social distancing those families. I think they're getting four or eight tickets and they're sitting seated by themselves, socially distanced away from other folks. So just again, some suggestions, the board may want to look at those suggestions, may have their own suggestions. But I do think one of the things that, you know, I remember myself of and faculty of today, that we have protocols in place. Our protocols, we need to make sure we're following them day in, day out, and reminding our kids to follow our protocols day in, day out. And don't get lackadaisical and don't be sort of not be mindful of what it is we do and how important following our protocols has not only helped us in the past, but hopefully will continue to help us moving forward.
Thank you for that. So board discussion, thoughts, questions, opinions. I can open it up if somebody else wants to go. What's your, what's your preference?
Just to clarify now, I know when, in the spring, when the reopening plan was put together, it was a work group or a committee, I guess, that signed off on that. Have you reconvened or thought about reconvening that work group to, to look at, you know? Because, you know, it's tough because obviously the five of us aren't in the building every day and don't have responsibility. But, you know, a group of people that, you know, is there day in and day out. Have you brought that group back together to reevaluate what can be done better and also what needs some change?
No, as I said, I just ran through the administrative team, Scott, at that time. Just give me some of the timing and some of the responsibilities that folks have to pull people in. It was, it was certainly not impossible and certainly can be done, but really try to lean on my administrators who are reading each building along with Tara and Kelly and our directors to give me feedback.
I also think that when we opened the plan.
Yeah, we were, just a few months ago, it was in such a different time, the numbers were low. If you look at Sullivan County right now, we're the highest in the state in Hampshire. It's not slowing down. You talk to anybody in hospitals, there's no room. They're, you know, moving people out of hospitals because they can't get in. And that's what we based, at least what I based on, is when we opened the school, what did it look like? It doesn't look like that anymore.
I agree. I think this is really lacking in any consideration for what's going on in the community. So I think that needs to be considered. I also feel like, like some of this, where the masks are concerned, it's a reactive approach. And I think like when you base it on percentage of positive cases in the school before you enact a mask mandate, it's too late by that point, right? Because you've got that, that percentage of your population that's been unmasked, unmasked potentially already contributing to the spread. So I feel like this is a little bit, I don't know that it's effective personally.
Andy, what are your thoughts?
I think the kids, correct, are in a different spot than we were, you know, at the beginning of the year. Yeah, I think the first, my first concern is the safety of all children in school. I think last year was a little bit different because we had a different variant. I think that's why we might have had a little bit more success than we're having this year. But also you can't say that masks don't help. It could be a very big help. You know, you don't know that. So I, I guess I'm in agreeance to, to make the mask thing a little bit more like last year than the way that we have it right now. I don't love that. I think it also has other harmful effects on children. But I, I don't, I don't want to see anybody hospitalized on our watch because we neglected the data that we have.
Yeah, I don't think I would beat it down. We're all sick of this. It absolutely sucks. But at the same time, we've also had two significant outbreaks so far in the school year. And Ed and Kerry, I think also pointing out is we're at the front end, we're in the worst place, and it's gonna get worse. The governor's talking about getting worse. Hospitals are full. Friends that work at hospitals are devastated and talk to them. So I'm looking at this, I guess, I've been saying this since August, that I think we should have started the year where we were. And it finished last year, and I absolutely think we should be that way going forward. So I have, I'm looking at, I've put a lot of thought on this, and I'm looking at this two ways. We have to do anything that's within our power to increase the safety. Some of the districts, some of the workplaces that have a mask mandate like mine, doesn't mean that they're not having COVID. Doesn't mean they're, they necessarily, percentage-wise, might, may or may not be for a variety of factors that is too broad to get into. But I think I want us to think about as a community and as anyone involved at the school and as the board, is that there's a different path with children around adults. And we have, I just really want to extend what you're talking about, and I appreciate you're talking about the lackadaisical, taking a fresh view. I want to extend that a little bit more in that leaders have to model the behavior they want. So parents have to model the behavior they want. So anybody who works in a school, in our school, with children, with students, young adults, sorry. I think that we really need to reset on modeling the behavior enduringly, consistently, with peer accountability, leader accountability, upward pressure down. That we do everything possible when we're in the presence of or across the parking lot from the folks that we are serving, our students and our community. So with vigilance, whatever happened last year in the mask mandate, we do it better. I can, I get, I've gotten emails that, from parents, we've gotten emails from parents, that there have been bus rides where there were not masks worn. That goes against our policy, that goes against larger, that goes against what the mandates are. And it just sets a terrible example. So any of that has to be immediately rectified. It's a performance issue, it's a safety issue. It's, we have to do this differently. And I think that there's a few specific concerns. Cafeteria and noses. If the nose is out and people are walking around and have these, these masks around, if I see one more mask on a chin, I'm gonna lose my emotional self-awareness. We have to have, we have to model the behavior we want from each other, even if some, we know some people don't like it. We have to model it for the kids. I'm concerned about the gym. So to get to what, what those actions are, I'm sorry if I'm giving a speech. I would like board support that the mask mandate for the district is strictly followed through January fourteenth. That gives us two weeks after the next break. We got three, three-ish weeks of school. the next break. We've got three, three-ish weeks of school until the Christmas break. I would like to see the mandate be a model district in New England with adhering to the mask mandate till the 14th of January. We have a meeting on the 12th. We can all learn a lot and hopefully all get through this together because it's gonna get a lot worse. And then the board can talk again, get input and feedback from administration and teachers, public. And then we can take it from there. That's what I think we should have. I also want to clarify that if there is a person in a school building, they have masks on. How you handle basketball and volleyball, I still, I personally feel there should be masks. I will defer to those responsible for the students in the sports to figure out what the best step is. But if there are people, rec uses our buildings. If anyone is in, has a button seat, is inside a door, they should have a mask on. Again, do everything that we can possibly control. That's where I'm coming from. Thoughts or pushback? Can argue, we can agree?
I think the Davey's suggestion is a reasonable one. And I think what that also does is I would suggest, you know, kind of crush this. This is a great start, by the way. It's great that you're beginning to think this through as a team. But if you can reconvene that work group over the coming weeks, I know there's a lot going on at the holiday, but really work through, I don't think, you know, we've got, you know, the time and the input to go through this whole list tonight. But if, if your work group can crush through this in the coming weeks, so that when we come back together for the January meeting, we've, you know, you've had, you know, hopefully enough time to go through this and really find freedom.
Yeah, it's gonna get a lot worse. And we have to be, we can make a difference. We can model what we want. We can put kids at ease. And if people have feelings about liberty and freedom and those things, they can have those feelings. But in the best interest of anything we can control, I'd really like to see us have them, have it and be, be an example for other districts about what, doing every last thing that can be done to keep the children safe.
Makes sense. I think, I think right now we're not through the holiday, Thanksgiving holiday, travel implication, family gatherings, large gatherings, whatever's happened in Thanksgiving. So we've still got technically a window that we're not through there. We're gonna roll right into Christmas, same thing. And then, you know, mid-January at least gets us through that period. And I think also with the vaccines now for the younger kids available, it gives plenty of opportunity to get those younger kids vaccinated for the ones who want to do that, which also should help with that. And then we can reevaluate where we're at as a community at that point. But it seems reasonable to me. I guess one quick question I would ask is what I don't see in this policy, maybe this is something that could be touched on when the committee reconvenes, is what is the policy for kids that, or any staff or faculty for the matter, that have to, that go off to be tested? Are they allowed back in school while they're waiting for their results? Okay. Because I mean, that's part of rumor mill that's going around too, is that, I mean, and I don't know that you would have any control or even know that that happens, but that's kind of what I've heard some feedback coming back on. The people are off, they go get tested, they come back to school, then they get the results and like, oh crap, I gotta go home because I'm positive. And meanwhile, you've been back in school. So again, I don't know how you could even possibly try to control that, but I think you'd be good to at least have it documented, what the policy is there.
We have a pretty accurate spreadsheet. We've had a couple going and I, we just, we did them coming back after Thanksgiving. Unfortunately, I think what has happened is some people may have not been sent home by us, but maybe had gotten tested.
That's right, yeah.
And not had told anyone they got tested and stayed and just came back until they got the results. I'm glad it's us that they even got tested.
Right. And that's why I said I don't think you can control it. But at least giving a nod to it in your policy would at least, you know, pay some attention.
When you're talking about communities, there's, I want to touch on teachers and staff and how they're able to keep up and manage so many people coming and going. But I do want to really emphasize, and please feel free to add on, and please feel free, Sean, me and Dad as well. We've had kids sick from kids coming to school sick. And there's, there's a limit to what, I'm not sure how to sort of talk this through, but if this is a team sport to get through this winter as a community, this is a community sport to get, keep enough kids safe to be learning, keep enough parents safe to go to work. So as much as I appreciate welcoming us to going out till the 14th, we can make it an action item, we can certainly do that next. I appreciate some receptivity to that. There's only so much a school district can do if there are kids that are sick sent to school. And I understand, I have compassion for parents who are trying to keep their jobs. But if the tracking doesn't know that people got tested and may or may have symptoms, then it's pretty hard to have effective tracking. It's pretty hard to run a classroom, it's pretty hard to be a principal of a building if there is knowledge that there is a symptom that's relevant. Understanding it's disruptive to everybody and to work security for the parents. Sick kids, known sick kids have come to school, been sent to school, and other kids have been affected. And we have to do this as a community where that doesn't happen. Whatever that risk is that's associated, we can't have that happen. It's one of the biggest risks to getting through this winter. The school can control, it sounds like there's a recommitment, there's clarity and alignment on the board, that's controllable. That's actually in its own way, potentially the easy part, is the rest of the community. So we can keep our staff and our teachers, and we can keep them safe. So this is a plea to really be working as a team sport to make good choices, conservative choices, so they can get through this time. Because we haven't even seen the sweep of what's supposed to be an absolutely brutal flu season that's coming as well. So we have some, all kinds of factors that are challenging. But if we can show each other and show the students that we're doing the best that we can, then that's a very different way to go through this. And I think some of the camaraderie and effectiveness that made us one of the only districts last year, I couldn't find another district anywhere that lost one day to COVID. So if we can return to that sort of camaraderie and that momentum, engaging the families, engaging the kids too, kids better keep their masks on appropriately, we could bring some positive to really work just terrible moment in history. So that's my plea. Anything you want to add, Andy?
Yeah. Russ, are we still actively contact tracing so that we're, the risks are?
Yeah, so that, again, last year, it was so black and white. This year, there's no contact tracing. So we're not required to contact trace. We have, we've been told there's no reason for us to do that. The only thing to contact trace now is a household contact. So a member in a household that gets COVID, other members in that household that are not vaccinated must write out the 10 days of the person that has COVID and then do an additional days after that, additional 10 days of their own after the person has done their initial 10 days before. That's, that's our contact tracing that we're required to do. Again, it was a lot, it was a lot cleaner last year what we were asked to do and why we were asked to do it. This year, there's no contact tracing. I don't, I don't know why that is. And I, because now I don't have a way to say, all right, well, you guys are all contact tracing, now you're staying home. So that, that gave us that ability last year. I don't have a ground to say, you're contact, well, there's no contact tracing, so how can I ask you to stay home?
Does the board can we adopt that policy from last year or not?
I think you'd be high press because you're now really writing, sort of overriding the medical experts in the state on